Clerk will report HJR 718.
House Joint Resolution Number 718, election of a Court of Appeals of Virginia Judge, Circuit Court Judges, General District Court Judges, Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court Judges, a member of the Judicial Inquiry and Review Commission, and a member of the State Corporation Commission.
Delegate from Pennsylvania, Delegate Adams.
I move the adoption of the resolution.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Mr. Speaker, I have a floor amendment. I haven't had a chance yet to reduce it to writing, but it's pretty simple.
Delegate has a floor amendment?
A floor amendment would be to strike lines 68 and 69 of the resolution in their entirety and the last clause of the common after line five.
Ms. Speaker, point of order.
Delegate has a four.
Speaker, isn't it true that we have, as been our customary practice, it has to be before the clerk in writing?
Certainly. Yes.
Thank you.
Clerk will report a floor amendment.
Floor amendment offered by Delegate Simon to House Joint Resolution 718 on page two, line 68, strike the entire line through...
Strike all of...
Through Jan...strike all of 68 and all of 69.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Mr. Speaker, speaking to the motion.
Delegate has a four.
The idea here is that we proceed in the special order for the election of General District Court Judges, Circuit Court Judges, Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court Judges, and the Jerk Commission members, and we simply don't proceed today with the election of a member of the State Corporation Commission. Many of us didn't know that there would be such...in fact, we were told yesterday upon questioning by the delegate from Charlottesville, that we would not be taking up a State Corporation Commissioner today. It was told that we were only going to be voting on judges and particularly only those that were re-ops, and so this all came as a surprise to all of us this morning. We haven't had time to do an actual proper process, and so the point of this motion would be, should you guys vote yes on this motion, there'd be no election of a State Corporation Commissioner today.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, speaking to the floor amendment.
Delegate has a four.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I will advise the delegate and his colleagues when I spoke on this topic yesterday, the accurate information up to that minute when I spoke about the prospect of having this particular election, that is, of the SEC Commissioner today, it was unlikely to happen or not going to happen, and that, as everyone in this room is aware, things change very quickly around here, especially in a 45-day session, and a few hours after we were on the floor, those discussions began again to try to fill this seat, which we've been waiting for, for a very long time, to try to make sure that that commission is fully up to speed on having its membership, and so, once the agreed-upon consensus candidate occurred yesterday, the wheels were put in motion to try to facilitate this vote as quickly as possible, and so, I just want my colleagues across the aisle to know, at the moment we were debating that yesterday or answering those questions, that was accurate. Again, the shifting winds happening here as they do, that changed very quickly, and now I think we're in a posture that, at the very least, both majority parties feel very comfortable that they have a consensus candidate and would like to move forward today, so I would ask the members of the body to resist and vote no on the floor amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Fuller Corn.
Mr. Speaker, I rise to speak in support of the floor amendment.
Delegate has a four.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, we discussed this on the floor yesterday, and I respect my colleague from the Shenandoah who said, "Things happen quickly and spur of the moment," but I quote, he said, "Anything involving the State Corporation Commission will be at a much later date." So, following up, my colleague from Fairfax has said, "This has come up, risen suddenly, without notice, with no transparency. We spend so much time on the floor focusing on transparency on both sides of the aisle. We have spent so much time on the floor talking about the Virginia Way. This is not the Virginia Way. This is not in the best interest of our constituents, and I would also say that we have not had ample opportunity to even research this nominee. I respect the fact that the other side of the aisle might have a consensus nominee, but this is an important position. This is something that we have been discussing and waiting for, for over a year, and now to suddenly come through and have us make a decision without ample time to review, to study, to research, I think is a disservice to our constituents and to the public. And again, it's not...we really need to do what's in the bright, best interest of our constituent and focus on the Virginia Way and transparency, Mr. Speaker. I urge us to support the floor amendment."
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Speaking to the floor amendment.
Delegate has a four.
Mr. Speaker, this candidate did not materialize out of thin air, and she is not somebody that is a great mystery to the general public, and especially a great mystery to this body and our colleagues down the hall. The agreed-upon candidate has been in public service for the entirety of her professional life. She served as...
Mr. Speaker?
Point of order.
Delegate from Charlottesville, Delegate Scannell.
With all due respect to my colleague who seemed to have his voice back, is he not speaking to the merits of the candidate as opposed to the motion itself?
I'm speaking to the motion, Mr. Speaker. I'm speaking to the floor amendment.
I think he's speaking to the floor amendment, and I would say to the gentleman, I could have said the same thing, really, this amendment should not be in this part of the process. This amendment really should be later on, but certainly understood that, and so I think the gentleman can continue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, this particular candidate served as the Director of Department of Juvenile Justice, right here in our fair city. She served as the Secretary of Public Safety. She was elected by this body as a Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court Judge. She was elected by this body not once but twice as a Circuit Court Judge. She was the Chief Deputy Attorney General in the Attorney General's Office. She served on the Code Commission. She served on the Crime Commission. She now serves on the Ethics Commission. This is not a mystery candidate, okay? And everybody knows everything about her, and if there are some things you don't like, and those are the real reasons that we want to delay this, I understand that, but let's say that, and not pretend like we don't know anything about her. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from...Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Fuller Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would say that this is a mystery candidate.
Delegate would like to speak to the...
Yes, please, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate has a four.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity. I would say to the delegate from Shenandoah that indeed, this candidate actually is a mystery candidate, that we have not heard this individual previously, and I'm not claiming that she's not intelligent or bright. What we're saying is that this is not the way to move forward. This is not transparency. This is a process issue as well. We have not had ample opportunity to look into this individual. I think process is important here, and I'd also like to say that we have, in the past, we have had time to research, to look into publications of various candidates, and this name was first given to us yesterday. There have been other names in the process that we've been waiting for a year, but we have been un...we were uninformed of this individual until yesterday, and I think, again, this is all about transparency. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Arlington, Delegate Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Speaking of the resolution.
Speaking of the floor amendment.
Floor amendment, I apologize. To most Virginians, I mean, the SEC is a bit of an enigma wrapped in a mystery, but let's be clear, it's got immense power in the Commonwealth. It's where corporations get a charter, it's where electric companies go to gas for rate increases, where insurance companies go to check about whether or not they're in good health. Started off as a progressive notion, and still is in many ways, the creation of the SEC in the early 20th century was a decisive shift in the organization of state government. Regulatory decision-making moved from the legislature to a permanent body which could hire specialists and conduct inquiries. At the time, the nation's railroads were growing at a phenomenal rate and had become essential to economic expansion. Unfortunately, excessive power and corruption accompanied that rapid growth. Typical Virginian in 1900 lived in a farm or a small rural community, unfair freight and passenger rates charged by railroads in Virginia were among the chief grievances of a growing number of farmers and populists and progressives. Formerly, the SEC is charged with administering Virginia's laws related to the regulation of public utilities, insurance, state-chartered financial institutions, investment securities, retail franchising, and railroads. It's the state's central filing for the corporations, limited partnership, limited liability companies, and the UCC liens. Their jurisdiction includes many, almost all, of major businesses in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Since its inception, citizens have had a right to appear before the SEC, they've had a right to...it implements the Affordable Care Act, 57 banks with over 1,000 branches. Basically, the SEC plays a central role in Virginia's energy economy as well. It oversees everything from the construction of new solar farms to the deployment of energy efficiency programs by utilities. As such, the commission governs the speed and scope of Virginia's transition to an advanced energy economy. This role has become all the more important in the past with the passage of the Grid Modern Transformation Security Act, SB 966, last year. Just in 2018, the SEC addressed wind and solar development, grid modernization, and the IOU's IRPs. Because of its unique structure and duties, it's been described as the fourth branch of government, and repeatedly as the most powerful regulatory body in America. The most powerful regulatory body in America. The SEC's structure is unique in that it's organized as a separate Department of Government here in Virginia with delegated administrative, legislative, and judicial powers. No other state agency has placed...no other state has placed in a single agency such a broad array of regulatory responsibility. SEC decisions can only be appealed to the Virginia Supreme Court. The SEC's three judges are elected by the General Assembly, but other than that, there is no accountability to the Commonwealth it serves. We've not had time to properly vet this individual. We found out about her candidacy literally hours ago. We should be asking, will this person fully and faithfully follow the laws established by the General Assembly, such as the Grid Transportation and Security Act? Can they effectively and independently regulate the utilities? How familiar is this candidate with advanced energy and its benefits for Virginia's economy and consumers? We've not seen the breadth of her writing, we haven't been able to discuss her positions extensively and appropriately, or her time as a judge. Where is the transparency? And what we've learned over the past few hours has given us pause. We have questions about her positions on climate change, the Affordable Care Act, gay marriage. The SEC is far too important and covers so much of what Virginia citizens deal with every day. We need to be able to truly debate and vet this position and the candidate.
Delegate from Falkir, Delegate Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, speaking to the amendment.
Delegate has a four.
Just real quick, I'd like to point out that the candidate in question did not receive a single no vote upon her certification, so the committee felt that she was certified to serve in this position. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Miarz.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, speaking to the amendment.
Delegate has a four.
There may be some questions about Patricia West have been raised here. I had the pleasure, perhaps maybe the only person in this body who's had the pleasure of being in front of her in court, though I think maybe perhaps...I'm sorry to my esteemed colleague from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey, but I can tell you that, in my experience as prosecutor, then also in practice in front of Judge West, she is one of the finest judges I've had the pleasure of being in front of. When you're a Circuit Court Judge, oftentimes, you're dealing...every day you're dealing with people that are there on their worst day. These are people that have both been the victims of some of the most horrific crimes or the stress of unbelievable litigation that's involving their business and their life and their property and their homes. And what's the type of quality you would want for somebody in this position, particularly one that balances the needs of citizens and businesses and consumers? And I think one of the most important qualities is the ability to listen, and I saw that every day when I was in court with Judge West, as well as an incredible amount of compassion for those whose lives have been traumatized as the victim of crime, as well as a unbelievable adherence to the rule of law. And so, my personal experience of her, she's eminently qualified, it's been already noted, she is not a new face. She's been proved by this body several times before in a variety of different positions, and I think it'd be the pleasure of this body to strike down the floor amendment. Thank you.
Delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Mr. Speaker, I have a motion.
Delegate has a four.
I move the pending question.
Delegate Kilgore moves the pending question. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it, the pending question is moved. The question is on the floor amendment offered by Delegate Simon. All those in favor of the floor amendment will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it, the floor amendment is defeated. There are sufficient votes for the ayes and nays. Shall the floor amendment be agreed to? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 43, noes 52.
Ayes, 43, noes 52. The floor amendment is defeated. The delegate from Pennsylvania, Delegate Adams.
Mr. Speaker, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 78, noes zero.
Ayes, 78, noes zero. The resolution is agreed to. Delegate from Pennsylvania, Delegate Adams, will communicate the action of the House to the Senate, and at the proper time, the Senate will communicate their action in HJR 718 to the House. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand for two announcements.
Delegate has a four.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm going to do this first announcement in reference to a press conference this afternoon at 4:00 in the House briefing room, and we're going to ask that everyone who's available would join me with Governor Robert McDonough, the former governor, the current governor, Ralph Northam, Speaker of the House, myself and others, to talk about, and this is a nice time to talk about, reconciliation. And it is in reference to a committee that has been established over the last year, working toward Virginia's for reconciliation, to look at in conjunction with the 2019 commemoration of the first African, the first women who have come to Virginia, and so, for those who are available, would you please join us this afternoon once again in the House briefing room? And then, we would...I have a resolution that will be passed around and asking if others would sign on, if you would sign on to that, and that is House Joint Resolution 617, and it's designated 2019 as a year of reconciliation and civility in Virginia, and we would love to have everyone's signature on this particular resolution. Thank you.
Delegate from Sussex, Delegate Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an announcement.
Delegate has a four.
Thank you. I'd just like to announce today that the Rural Caucus will be holding their weekly meeting at 5:00 today in the Senate Subcommittee Room Number Two. Our special guest would be Brian Ball, Virginia Secretary of Commerce and Labor, and Evans Fineman, Governor's Chief Broadband Advisor, and that's this afternoon at 5:00. Thank you.
Pursuant to House Rule 30, the journal shall reflect the following members who are away on pressing personal business in our granted leave from today's session, Delegates Converse Fowler and Delegate Rasul. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
The second morning hour order of business is not applicable for today's calendar.
The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Mr. Speaker, the third morning hour order of business, there are no such, so it's not applicable.
The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Fourth and final portion of the morning hour, member requests for points of personal privilege are now in order.
Delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate has a four.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, today I want to talk about the important issue of jobs in the economy. This year has the potential to be a transformative year for Virginia, because we are at a time where our business climate is booming. We are removing burdensome regulation, and our business community is responding. Everybody in this body will be asked to vote on several major economic development projects this year. Virginia was honored to receive late in 2018 the announcement that Amazon will be opening its second headquarters right here in Virginia, bringing along with it tens of thousands of new jobs to be filled by hard-working Virginians. According to the Virginia...excuse me. According to the Virginia Chamber of Foundation, Amazon's offices alone will produce an estimated economic activity of $6.4 billion from 2019 to 2030. But it gets better, Mr. Speaker. The total impact, when including spinoff businesses, will be more than twice that. That's $15 billion in new economic activity and 60,002 new jobs by 2030. Mr. Speaker, another big announcement last year was Micron, and despite some saying the 1,100 jobs weren't wanted, Micron plans a major expansion in Virginia, and we cannot be happier to continue that relationship. I'd like to thank the Virginia Economic Development Partnership and Stephen Murray for their hard work. So, Mr. Speaker, why this great increase in economic activity? Well, because Virginia, in many cases led by this body, have kept Virginia's business climate welcoming and ripe for business. Did you know, according to the Virginia Chamber of Commerce, last year alone, the General Assembly defeated bills that would have cost Virginia 150,000 jobs? Mr. Speaker, another stat, Virginia is constantly ranked in the top five of most business-friendly states, and that's across multiple publications, many of which cite our focus on regulatory reform, which was...and regulatory reform last year was championed by my good friend, Republican Delegate from Falkir, Delegate Weber. That's right, Mike. Mr. Speaker, how do we get here? Well, this is a result of a lot of hard work. Over the past few years, we've transformed our economic development model to be more responsive, more proactive, and more creative. We focused on economic growth, not just economic recruitment. One example is this, Mr. Speaker, and you championed this, with the creation of Go Virginia, which has helped foster an environment of partnership and collaboration. We have also redesigned our research and commercialization efforts to capitalize on existing resource and compete in the economy of tomorrow. Lastly, we've increased our oversight and accountability with economic development, which has restored a level of trust and confidence in our efforts to recruit and grow businesses. But it's important we didn't get here...it's important to remember, we didn't get here overnight, and I can promise you, we'll drop back quickly if we don't continue to fight for economic growth policies. That means protecting right to work. That means keeping taxes low. That means developing our talent pipeline, which, Mr. Speaker, I know is a major focus of you this year. The delegate from Suffolk, Delegate Jones, is also carrying legislation this year that creates, and this is a mouthful, the Commonwealth of Virginia Research Consortium Authority to oversee and support research and commercialization in the Commonwealth. Mr. Speaker, you have legislation that I know you know well. That will foster...this legislation will foster innovation partnerships on degree productions, internships for young people, business involvement that will make sure our young people find good jobs and can live out their lives in the Commonwealth, not Silicon Valley. Paired with robust research efforts, we can take Virginia to the next level when it comes to patenting new innovative technologies and ideas. It's about taking the great work being done at our colleges and turning it into commercial applications that help our businesses grow and our economy grow. In closing, why is Virginia thriving? Because of our work together to secure major initiatives like Amazon and Micron, and because of this House work to keep our economic climate business-friendly. We can take the next step and make 2019 the 400th year of this body, a transformative one for our economy and our future. We continue to make Virginia the best place to live, work, raise a family, and retire. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Middlesex, Delegate Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate has a four, even though it's a four.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I know in the gallery it's a little late, but they arrived late this afternoon. We have a number of folks, I see Jimmy and Kim Williams, and a number of folks back from the district, from Matthews and Gloucester, here to meet with me and the legislators and to see the legislative process, so please join me and welcome them to the Capitol.
Certainly, I welcome the group to the cap, and I hope you enjoy your visit. Sergeant Arms.
Mr. Speaker, a message from the Senate.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenchain, welcome.
Good to see you, Mr. Speaker. I've been directed by the President of the Senate to inform the House delegates, Senate is agreed to House Joint Resolution Number 718.
Thank you, Senator Obenchain. The time for the joint order has arrived, and the House, on its part, is ready to proceed with the execution of HJR 718. Nominations are now in order for a judge for the Court of Appeals of Virginia. The clerk will report a resolution.
House Resolution Number 219, nominating a person to be elected to the Court of Appeals of Virginia.
Are there any further nominations? The chair here is none. As many as favor the adoption of the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The resolution is agreed to. Nominations are now in order for judges of the Judicial Circuit. The clerk will report a resolution.
House Resolution Number 220, nominating persons to be elected to Circuit Court Judgeships. That resolution is distributed, available online before the body.
Are there further nominations? Chair here is none. As many as favor the adoption of the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The resolution is agreed to. Nominations are now in order for judges of the General District Courts. The clerk will report a resolution.
House Resolution Number 221, nominating persons to be elected to General District Court Judgeships. The resolution is before the body.
Are there further nominations? The chair here is none. As many as favor the adoption of the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The resolution is agreed to. Nominations are now in order for the judges of the Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Courts. The clerk will report a resolution.
House Resolution Number 222, nominating persons to be elected to Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court Judgeships. The resolution is distributed, available online, is before the body.
Are there any further nominations? The chair here is none. As many as favor the adoption of the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The resolution is agreed to. Nominations are now in order for the members of the Judicial Inquiry and Review Commission. The clerk will report a resolution.
House Resolution Number 223, nominating a person to be elected as a member of the Judicial Inquiry and Review Commission. The resolution is available online, distributed, is before the body.
Are there further nominations? The chair here is none. As many as favor the adoption... As many as favor the adoption of the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The resolution is agreed to. Nominations are now in order for a member of the State Corporation Commission. The Clerk will report a resolution.
Mr. Speaker, House Resolution Number 224, nominating a person to be elected as a member of the State Corporation Commission. House Resolution 224 has been distributed, available online, is before the body.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon was up first.
Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
Delegate may state it.
Mr. Speaker, if someone were opposed to the nomination, I know that during elections, it's typically only those are in favor of the candidate vote yes, and those that are not wishing to vote for the candidate don't vote at all. On this particular nomination, if somebody objects to the nomination of this particular nominee, would the appropriate thing to do be to vote no on this resolution?
I would say that's their choice, but we only count and record affirmative votes. And so even though we're show on the board, when they actually, the votes are recorded, the only thing they do is affirmative vote. They don't make -- they make no distinction between no, abstain, et cetera. So you'll notice I will say, those in favor will vote yes. And even when I read the tally sheet, I will say something like, "Senor Judge." Marcus Simon received in the House, blank -- I know.
Zero votes.
Bad example. Marcus Simon receiving the House, blank votes in the Senate, blank vote. So that's how the process would work.
Mr. Speaker, further parliamentary inquiry.
Delegate may state it.
So, Mr. Speaker, if I understood, you just described the process that we're going to undertake after these resolutions are all adopted. But somebody who didn't want us to proceed with the nomination, somebody who maybe voted for the floor amendment before, might want to vote no on this particular resolution. And that's -- those votes are, if we get to a voice vote, would be recorded. Is that correct, Mr. Speaker?
Delegate would be correct on that.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
I'm sorry. Delegate from Charleswood, Delegate Oskana.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Parliamentary inquiry.
Delegate may state it.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There's some suggestion that some of the folks can't access this on their computers. My inquiry is, is there a specific person linked to that nomination right now, or is it just simply so it has the person's name associated with it? Correct?
Mr. Speaker, House Resolution Number 224 has the individual's name in that resolution.
I think, I think, Mr. Speaker, I think some people don't have the resolution. I think that's part of the problem.
Mr. Speaker.
Let's wait one second.
Right. Mr. Speaker, Members of the Body.
Everyone listen up and we'll tell you.
House Resolution Number 224 is available on LIS. It's under all bills if you're using IHOD.
Delegate from Charleswood, Delegate Oskana.
Thanks. Speaking to the resolution.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, I hope that you will, well, I hope that you will reject the resolution. I would prefer that this be passed by for the day, but we know what this is going to happen here, so there's no sense in going through the machinations of it. And let me just make the argument as to why you should pass, you should not pass this today. Yesterday, at about 12:30 or 1 o'clock, we were in this body, and there was some discussions about the continuing order. And at that point in time, I remember getting up and asking the Delegate from Rockingham, I'm sorry, the Delegate from Shenandoah, about whether we would consider SEC nominations shortly. And the point was made at the time that the Senate has been dragging their heels for a year in giving us someone that we thought we might be able to support. At that point, he didn't make an unequivocal statement that we wouldn't. He did say he didn't expect that we would. And he did explain today on the floor about what happened. And what happened is we're basically caving into the Senate. The Senate decided that they wanted to get something done, and you all are caving to them. So they came over to you with a nominee. A nominee that is a mystery candidate that had never been discussed in the public before, except for her prior confirmations. It is true that this woman appears to be a very talented Circuit Court judge. It is true that she has served in distinction in administrations in the past and has presented points of view that are diametrically opposed to a lot of points of view we share over here, whether it's on same-sex marriage, whether it's on climate change, whether it's on the ACA. But she was doing a job. I think she probably shares those views independent of her legal obligation to present her point of view as a representative of the Attorney General. But we really don't know. And the reason we don't know, Mr. Speaker, is that we've never really had a chance to talk with this person. At 4:45, we received notice, that's yesterday, that this person would be interviewed for certification by the Joint Senate and House Commerce and Labor Committees. 4:45. Who knows when the notice went out to the public? Who knows? I'm not sure anybody here knows. But you know what, Mr. Speaker? It didn't matter because this is the exercise of raw political power in its glorious majesty. Pure and simple, raw political power. You got the votes, and you're going to force it down people's throats, even though they didn't have an opportunity to vet this person, to talk about this person. Well, Mr. Speaker, let me tell you. Social media is lighting up about this candidate, and we can only assume what else is going to be out there. Now, from my point of view, Mr. Speaker, the reason why we should wait is to give her a chance so that she is not assassinated in the press, because we know what that can be like. There are things out there that are probably being discussed that aren't true about this person. So why not wait? Give her a chance. Usually with judges, we give them an opportunity to come along, come around, and say hi to us, and tell us what they think about things. Now, you may say, okay, yeah, she's qualified, she's been a Circuit Court judge. The State Corporation Commission is not a walk in the park. If you look at her resume, which we just saw, there is no experience on health care regulation, there is no experience on energy regulation, there is no academic publications on any of this stuff. Now, she has practiced family law, and I love people who practice family law because I do it. But I would no more hold myself out as an expert on health care regulation just because I do family law. This is one of the most important appointments we will make, and we're doing it in less than 24 hours' notice. Mr. Speaker, I hope that you will vote no on this nomination.
Are there further nominations? The Chair here is none. As many as favor the adoption of the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no? The resolution is agreed to. As the days are called for, shall the resolution be agreed to? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 50; noes, 44.
Ayes, 50; noes, 44. The resolution is agreed to. The Delegate from Pennsylvania, Delegate Adams, will inform the Senate of the nominations The House will come to order. Block voting for judges and judicial officers will now commence. Those in favor of the nominee for a judge of the Court of Appeals of Virginia is noted in HR 215 for a term of eight years, commencing on the date specified, will vote yes. Clerk will close the roll. Those in favor of nominees for judges of the Circuit Courts is noted in HR 220 for terms of eight years, commencing on the date specified, will vote yes.
Mr. Speaker?
I'm sorry. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon. If y'all don't mind, if you're pressured to speak, I can pick it up a little quicker.
I apologize, Mr. Speaker, it's moving fast for me. As Delegate from Shenandoah said, things move quickly. I'm trying to keep up. If it were, if somebody wanted to move, remove a judge from the block, would now be the appropriate time to ask that a judge's name be removed from the block?
I would say yes.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of some members of my caucus, there are a number that have some concerns, I would ask that James P. Fisher Esquire of Falkir, as a judge in the 20th Judicial Circuit, be removed from the block so that they can have an opportunity to vote on that nomination separately. That's line 34 and 35.
We're going to take a second to make sure that's set up properly. Okay, let me repeat that. Those in favor of nominees for judges of the Circuit Courts, as noted in HR 220, for terms of eight years, commencing on the date specified, with the exception of Judge Fisher being removed from the block, will vote yes. Those in favor of, Delegate from Enrico, Delegate Bagby. I'm sorry.
Mr. Speaker, my speak light is broken mysteriously. I'm not sure. Not sure how that happened. Mr. Speaker, I rise for parliamentary inquiry.
Delegate may state it.
Again, and I hate to belabor this point, but I want to be clear because we have a lot of new members over in our side that haven't been through this process before. I know we talked about it a little bit earlier, but if somebody objected to this nomination, since this is an election and you've only called for the yes votes, the appropriate thing for someone who didn't approve of this nomination, for whatever reason, the process, substance, whatever, the appropriate thing for them to do would be just simply not vote. Is that correct? If they...
Yeah.
There's no reason to vote.
Once again, I mean, that's...
If you could remind Mr. Speaker of describing the process of the judicial election.
Yes, because once again, the only thing that will be recorded is affirmative vote. All right. Those in favor of James P. Fisher Esquire Falkir as a judge of the 20th Judicial Circuit for a term of eight years, commencing on July 1, 2019, will vote yes. Clerk will close the roll. Those in favor of the nominees for judges of the general district court is noted in HR 221 for terms of six years, commencing on the date specified, will vote yes. Clerk will close the roll. Those in favor of the nominees for judges of the Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Courts is noted in HR 222 for terms of six years, commencing on the date specified, will Clerk will close the roll. Those in favor of the nominee for a member of the Judicial Inquiry and Review Commission is noted in HR 223 for a term of four years, commencing on the date specified, will vote Clerk will close the roll. Those in favor of the nominee for a member of the State Corporation Commission is noted in HR 224 for a term of four years, commencing on the date specified, will vote yes.
Speaker appoints Delegates Adams of Pennsylvania, Watts, and Kilgore. The Committee on the Part of the House, Delegates to count and report the vote of each house in each house.
The House will be at ease.
Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for a motion.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Having voted on the prevailing side of HR 224, I ask that the vote be reconsidered.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
Delegate Gilbert.
Am I correct that the votes have not formally been tallied as we tally them, and she can just inform the clerk that she desires to change her vote at this time? Or anyone else, for that matter?
Delegate is correct. The House will come to order. The joint order under HJR 718 will be resumed. Delegate from Pennsylvania, Delegate Adams.
Mr. Speaker, I'm pleased to report that the Committee to count the vote of each House met, and the nominees fulfilled the criteria for election. I move that the reading of the report be waived.
The question is, shall the reading of the report be waived? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 92; noes, 0.
Ayes, 92; noes, 0. The reading of the report is waived. The judge previously nominated in HR 219, having received a majority of the votes cast by the members elected to each House, is declared duly elected as a judge of the Court of Appeals of Virginia for a term of eight years, commencing on the date specified. Those judges previously nominated in HR 220, having received a majority of the votes cast by the members elected to each House, are declared duly elected as judges of the circuit court of appropriate judicial circuits for terms of eight years, commencing on the date specified. Those judges previously nominated in HR 221, having received a majority of the votes cast by members elected to each House, are declared duly elected as judges of the general district courts of the appropriate judicial district for terms of six years, commencing on the date specified. Those judges previously nominated in HR 222, with the exception of Philip U. Fines in the 15th Judicial District, having received a majority of the votes cast by members elected to each House, are declared duly elected as judges of the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Courts of the appropriate judicial district for the term of six years, commencing on the date specified. The member previously nominated in HR 223, having received a majority of the votes cast by the joint vote of the two houses of the General Assembly, is declared duly elected as a member of the Judicial Inquiry and Review Commission for a term of four years, commencing on the date specified. The member previously nominated in HR 224, having received a majority of the votes cast by the joint vote of the two houses of the General Assembly, is declared duly elected as a member of the State Corporation Commission for an unexpired term, commencing March 1, 2019, and ending January 31, 2020. That concludes the joint order. Delegate from Bedford, Delegate Byron.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate, as before.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, in light of the actions we just took, you know, I've listened intently to the comments and concerns that have been expressed by the other side. Over the years, I've heard repeatedly how committed those on the other side of this chamber are to advancing qualified women. Today, however, we've learned that there's an asterisk to that commitment. Yes, they want to promote women into key positions in government, but only if those women adhere to one and only one set of views. Here today, we had an exceptional candidate who served as a cabinet secretary, a deputy attorney general, and she's served on the bench. Many of us know her from being in state government. We had before us this morning a woman with an impeccable reputation for being fair. And we also have the opportunity to give the State Corporation Commission its first female majority in history. But all those qualifications, the sterling reputation, the extensive experience, mean nothing if women in question don't adhere to your agenda. Well, as those on the other side are touting equality, here is your chance, folks, to practice what you preach. There's an exceptionally qualified woman that was before us. The vote's been taken, but the rhetoric will continue. She deserves your support, all of your support, and she certainly has mine. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Watts.
Point of personal privilege.
Delegate, as before.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I guess I do start with, as the longest-sitting woman in the House of Delegates. As a former cabinet secretary, when it was a combined Secretariat of Transportation and Public Safety. I know Judge West, I know Secretary West. Certainly, as two women who had the Secretary of Public Safety, we have communicated. I respect her abilities. But I have never asked for special privilege, nor do I expect that anybody would ever be elevated to any important position or any position unless they fully are qualified. And to me, the most important problem here is vetted. I personally, because I really respect the public and the image that this body represents to the public, I personally have sat at every judicial interview that I have been able to. It's hard to believe when I have missed one. And I have seen, again and again, because when it comes before courts, as it is so unusual, that the corporations committee would be looking at candidates, but certainly those of us who participate on courts see it again and again and again. And because the public is informed of when and who is going to be before the committee, on occasion, the public comes forward with information that we need to know. This is not inside baseball, even though it's our responsibility to cast the votes. It is not just about what I think, it's about whatever the public comes forward with. And that was what my vote was about, is that we have totally cut out the public, we haven't informed them, we haven't opened ourselves to that information. And to me, that's giving special privilege. I don't want it given to anybody. And I certainly do not associate with the fact that, for some reason, this candidate was treated differently because she's a woman. It just does not square with either her history or my history.
Clerk will call the calendar.
Calendar for today, Wednesday, January 16, 2019, for the Virginia House of Delegates. First category, House bills on third reading uncontested calendar. There are two bills in this block, House Bill 1759, and on page 2 of the printed calendar, House Bill 1925, which has an emergency clause.
Shall the bills pass? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 96; noes, 0.
Ayes, 96; noes, 0. The bills pass.
Continuing with the calendar, next category, House bill on third reading regular calendar. Page 2 of the printed calendar will be before us, is House Bill 1867, a bill to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to motor vehicle insurance verification by the Department of Motor Vehicles report.
Shall the bill pass? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 96; noes, 0.
Ayes, 96; noes, 0. The bill passes.
Continuing with today's calendar, final category of live action is House bill on second reading uncontested calendar, one bill in this category. It is House Bill 1836, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia relating to commercial fire insurance policies or contracts, changing amount of coverage. Bill is reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with amendments.
Delegate from Danville, Delegate Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, first of all, I'd like to move the amendments.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Committee amendments agreed to, Delegate Marshall.
So, Mr. Speaker, a lot of bills come to us that have a story. This has a story, from a constituent who was going to get a commercial policy. So he called the insurance company, the insurance company comes out, it values his property at $150,000. The constituent said, I just had this property appraised, it was appraised at $75,000. But the... So the constituent and the insurance company agreed to insure it for $100,000. This individual is paying premiums on a quarterly basis. He paid his first quarter, second quarter, and third quarter on time. He got the final quarter notice at 10 days before he was to pay. And they had raised the rate back up to $150,000 and said, pay it, or either we're going to cancel your policy. What it says is that if an insurance company in Virginia has... You pay on time, they cannot do this. I ask you to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The bill is engrossed and passed to third reading.
Mr. Speaker, that completes today's calendar.
Per House Rule 51, the House is returned to the morning hour. Does the clerk have any additional announcements or communication?
Just the meeting schedule for this afternoon, which is immediately... is as follows. The Appropriations Committee, as it is right now, almost 10 past 3, they will be meeting immediately upon adjournment in the shared committee room down the Pocahontas Building on the ground floor. Then, once they're finished, they'll have two subcommittees will meet. The Appropriations, Commerce, Agriculture, Natural Resources, and Technology Subcommittee will meet immediately upon the completion of the full committee. That'll be in the shared committee room. And then, once that Subcommittee's finished, then Appropriations Elementary and Secondary Education Subcommittee will be meeting in the shared committee room. Mr. Speaker, today's Courts of Justice meeting has been canceled, however, in lieu of the full committee, Committee on Courts of Justice, both the Subcommittee's will meet immediately upon adjournment of the House. Subcommittee Number 1, chaired by Delegate Gilbert, will be meeting in House Room 3. And Court Subcommittee Number 2, chaired by Delegate Leftwich, will be in House Room 1. At, Mr. Speaker, a half hour after adjournment, Subcommittee Number 1 of Finance, chaired by Delegate Byron...
We're going to meet immediately after.
Mr. Speaker, immediately upon adjournment of the House, Finance Subcommittee Number 1, chaired by Delegate Byron, will be meeting in the House Committee Room, which is on the ground floor of Pocahontas. Once they're finished, then... Oh, excuse me. One and one-half hours after adjournment of the House, approximately 4:30 or so, Committee on Finance Subcommittee Number 2, chaired by Delegate Hugo, they'll be meeting in the 300A Subcommittee Room. If you can get back with the rest of the regular schedule, as on the meeting list, 4 o'clock, ACNR Subcommittee Number 2, they will be meeting in the 400A Subcommittee Room, ACNR Natural Resources Sub, also at 4 o'clock, CCNT Subcommittee Number 2, they'll be meeting in 400B Subcommittee Room. As previously announced, there'll be a press conference at 4 in the House Briefing Room. So the last meeting today is also announced at 5 o'clock in Senate Room 2, the Rural Caucus will be meeting. That's the last piece of business for this afternoon. Looking ahead to tomorrow, January 17, Thursday, bright and early, Legislative Sportsman's Caucus will be meeting at 7 o'clock in 200B Subcommittee Room. At 8 o'clock, the New Americans Committee... Excuse me. New Americans Caucus will be meeting in the 300B Subcommittee Room. That's at 8 tomorrow. Going back slightly in time, Health, Welfare, and Institutions Subcommittee Number 1, they will be meeting bright and early at 7 o'clock, they'll be meeting in the House Committee Room. At 8:30, the Full Committee on Health, Welfare, and Institutions will be meeting, that too, will be in the House Committee Room on the ground floor of Pocahontas. At 7:30 tomorrow, Militia, Police, and Public Safety Subcommittee Number 2, chaired by Delegate Wilt, that'll be meeting at 300A Subcommittee Room on the third floor. At 7:30 tomorrow, Privileges and Elections Subcommittee Number 2, they will be meeting in the 400A Subcommittee Room. Tomorrow at 8:30, regular time, Transportation Committee will be meeting in House Room 3, here in Capitol Down in the Extension. And finally, the Democratic Cocks will meet at 11 a.m. tomorrow, and the Republican Cocks at 11:30 a.m. tomorrow. Democrats will be in House Room 2, Republicans in House Room 1. That completes the announcements I have, sir.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Mr. Speaker, I move that when the House adjourns today, it adjourned to reconvene tomorrow at 12 noon.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert moves that when the House adjourn today, it adjourned to reconvene tomorrow at 12 noon. As many as favor that motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's agreed to. Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Mr. Speaker, I move the House to now adjourn.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert moves the House to now adjourn. As many as favor that motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's agreed to. The House stands adjourned until tomorrow at 12 noon.